...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Need a, looking for approval of the agenda.
So move.
A motion, is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the amended agenda by the way. Uh, all those in favor, aye, pose same sign, motion carry. Motion for the minutes on February twenty.
Looks like the same minute, meaning I was at, I move, we approve the minutes on February twenty.
Yeah, the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. I'm almost ready. General public concern? Looks like you're all here for something. Yep.
Next one.
Okay, no, nobody for general public, it looks like Mr. Beatty.
That you?
That you?
Okay. So, this would be about the Texas Farms finisher site?
Pull that chair over there, Louie. Take that chair out.
You get this off going that way.
Okay, as I understand it, and if I'm wrong, someone please correct me, at the hearing in Des Moines, it was determined there may be a commercial business being run much closer than is allowed under the rules for confinement, which would be a ding in the master matrix, which would take it below passing. So, the question that would be before us today is whether, this wasn't anything anybody knew until the hearing started down in Des Moines. So, the question is whether we appeal to district court, which is our next option. With that information, it's probably a good idea to file the appeal. I'm not sure of the exact time limit, but we're within it, we're less than a week until we all down there, so. We need to get something filed in district court, so I'm here basically to ask for you guys to make a decision on what you want to do next. Seems like a simple decision, may have been, you would file the appeal, if you guys both to do that, let me see what happens in district court.
That's about our only option. I mean, Dave gave us all really good synopsis of what happened down there, and it sounded like it was kind of a slight debacle that led to, that led to this. They may not have followed the Roberts Rules orders and, and that, and, but be that as it may, if this is our option, that's my question, if this is the only option.
That, or that or let's die.
Yeah, that's the only thing we have.
And it was enough to confuse the members of the EPC, uh, pretty good.
They're very confused, the way it sounds.
Our lawyer was really confused.
Not something that comes up. Normally, when you go down there, everybody knows everything about the site, and it would be pretty, pretty rare to win, to get this information during the appeal hearing, so.
Well then, if we appeal it, then my understanding is, we can bring all this new evidence up to show that they don't make the master matrix.
Right. And that would be, the commercial business would be the...
Grounds for the appeal.
Yeah, the only grounds that we have, because that would take points away. Otherwise, they followed, regardless of what you think of the rules, it appears that they followed the rules that they're supposed to, to pass the master matrix, but a commercial business being run a couple hundred feet away is a ding on the master matrix, it'd take them below passing.
I think there's something in the sunny paper about, about decor they appealed, one similar to this, just read it yesterday.
Really?
Near a residence rather than a commercial business. There's another been appealed just recently.
Yeah, I don't think these are very common, but it sounds like this probably would be enough course of action to take here.
Can you represent us, or do we have to get different attorneys?
Well, I think it would be me, and normally what we do is if we have something, I contact the insurance company, I can't imagine the insurance company would come up on this, so. But still contact, so. I, if we start it, if the insurance company says they handle it, then they would kick me off and send somebody else, if they say, "We don't handle it," then it's nothing with me.
So this would be a hearing in Des Moines, similar to what they just went through?
It'll be here.
Oh, it'd be here.
It's gonna be district court.
District.
So it'll be district court in Humboldt.
Time frame would be?
Oh, I don't, maybe September? I'm not sure.
So would everything be halted, as far as process?
No.
I would...
No.
Yeah, what?
They're gonna allow them to build it, are they?
They, right now, they're allowed to.
Right now, they can start. We have to set a moratorium or something, injunction on it, yeah, state on it, so.
Be a moot point, if you're having a hearing in September and it's built.
Well, right, we would have to provide information suggesting that we may prevail in order to stop construction.
Can you accomplish that?
Well, I mean, if there, there's a commercial business being run that we take it out of the master matrix, then I think we would have, we'd have a hearing, we have to present evidence on that, on the judgment side.
The guy that runs the business is right behind you over here, so.
Okay, good. For the board and you and the... Okay. So I think that, that would make it more likely than not, but I can't predict to you what, what a judge would do.
So if they happen to build it and the judge rule in our favor, then they got a building you can't put hogs in.
Yeah. I don't know what you put ahead of that.
That's why we need to stay after our stay for construction, that was brought up at the meeting, missing one of the attorneys.
And John, are you saying that the information would be presented to the judge prior to the hearing?
Well, we would present information probably half, David form, and then if we need to present more information at a hearing, it would, or like the hearing would probably just be more argument than anything else.
Okay.
Well, if you look to the people behind us, I think we got part of Thor, all of Thor represented, so.
What's that? Commercial business, uh? I have information from, I am David's son, my wife Diane, and I've got some handouts for the board, and I've got, uh, some information that has not been presented, we weren't aware that, how the matrix, master matrix works, we are now, and we appeal with our, with our commercial business there, and you read, you, uh, correct the matrix, the matrix is twenty points below, and it would fail. Uh, we were never contacted by Iowa Select or any of the owners or anything, we didn't know anything about it, uh, we were informed about the hearing, uh, thank goodness our local board adjustment and our supervisors, uh, recommended denying it, uh, DNR, just looking at the master matrix, not aware of that, that there was a commercial business there, uh, they ruled like they would necessarily have to, but I do have information, and we do have a commercial business there and in Humboldt, and I've got the information on how the ma, the master matrix was scored, and it's on like a three-page thing, I've got a copy for each of the supervisors and the county attorney, and, uh, I'd like to just present that in just a few minutes. It appears to me it all goes back to the master matrix. Being an accountant, I understand numbers and things, and as it was originally presented, it did score four hundred and forty-five points, but they did, they took thirty points for not allowing, for a lot, for not being aware, uh, that there was commercial business within twenty-one hundred and forty feet. What brought our attention to it was the map they had, it showed thirty-three hundred and seventy-six feet from a commercial business. Well, we've, we've been in business there since October first fifty-three, we moved in the flood, but we still have a business there, we still have clients that come there, we still operate there, our majority of our business is in Humboldt now, but we still do business out there. We have the Iowa Farm Business Services, which was formed in July first of thirteen, my daughter and I are the owners of that, and, uh, we operate out of Humboldt and we operate out of our home, uh, there's no question about that, we have clients come both places, we had a client there on Saturday, we had a phone call Sunday morning at home. I have no problem if they want to go with the matrix, I understand the matrix, it doesn't matter about how being close to a residence or smell or anything, but let's at least have them present it correctly, it is an error their, their master matrix at this time. I have handouts for that.
So what's your wishes?
Well, if the option isn't, the best we can do at this point in time, I'd make a motion to, uh, appeal this into the district court situation that John just mentioned. I mean, move it forward and, and continue with the appeal.
If, and if additional information come forth at that time, is that right, John?
Right. I've got information right here, so, and I think...
I'll second Eric's motion.
Okay, thank you. Getting nervous here.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, Karen.
It was, that's all information that was known, but it was not known by me or the, uh, business, I was asking for this, come here.
That's John's copy?
You got one?
Oh, I got one.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to appeal this to the district court. Any other discussion on the motion?
This additional information ought to give us something to discuss, a reason to be there, I think it'd just be very helpful.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carry.
I make a motion to have John put a stay in so they can't construct him, do any construction.
We have a motion, is that what you, how you want it worded there, John?
I, I think I, I understand, yeah, I, I would do that anyway, oh yeah.
Second Dave's motion on that, then.
Put it in the proper legal form.
I would attempt to do that, yeah.
Motion and a second to, for a stay, to hopefully halt the construction part of it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. We have a stay, and, any other?
I don't have anything else on it, so. I'll do what I told you I would do, start it, once we turn something out, I doubt that the houses that I have, I need to...
Anybody, you always have something to add to that, be additional information?
I do. Why were we not notified sooner of the meeting in Des Moines? I had heard somebody received an email and didn't let anybody else know, but we didn't know.
So, to our knowledge, so did we.
That's all we've ever told.
We don't know.
I'm right here. I heard you knew and didn't let anybody else know, is that true?
Well, it's not that I didn't let anybody else know, I, I mean, I, I get the information, I found out about the appeal that it was due, and then later when I realized, and I just, I thought that the email was to more than just me, I didn't realize that I was the one with that information.
My next question, I have one. How qualified are you to be pursuing this?
Well...
Yeah, that's irrelevant, are you qualified?
What do you mean by qualified?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll address that, John. Uh, no offense.
No.
But just when we did some tax litigation, we hired outside counsel, because they were more qualified in that field, I guess.
I would say definitely.
And I think that's what he's basically asking, how much experience would he have in this type of thing?
Um, I don't have any experience in this, um, I have more experience than most county attorneys, but, um, these aren't that common, and I don't know where to find anybody else around here with any experience in this area, so, uh, on the hand, I know what I'm doing, I think I can handle this, but, um, that's up to the board.
Well, there are times that she was a viper, she was, she called, "We trust all of, we elected you guys and we, we trust you, you know what you're doing." She called you reckless and frivolous. She called us frivolous, like our lives and our homes matter nothing. She thinks we live out there without water, without electricity, and without sewer, do you believe that?
That's what she did.
I know, it's her job.
The last time we went down to, I, I think that's what they do with all of the EPC and...
She was very doing that.
That's her job?
Yeah.
Intimidating.
I mean, I would like to know one thing, they're building a hog setup in my backyard, and what the hell is it? What they doing with, how many? Well, I like, I got a bunch of questions, how many hogs is a thorough to, uh, you know, big or thorough to finish? What they doing with the manure? How many, how much stories they got for manure? Uh, what about the smell? Are they doing anything, there is thing they can do to, to that smell? I've worked with hogs all my life, and are they artificially incinerating, are they...
Well, I'm assuming it says Texas finisher.
Yeah, they're finishing operation.
That's what it says on the application.
I mean, I didn't see anything, and still I heard about it Saturday. Nobody's got all the information.
Yeah.
Yeah. It has the amount of volume of manure and all that stuff, isn't it?
This is the application, right here.
Isn't it?
I mean, I never heard it's a thing.
Well, the, the other people from Ta, Thor have been over here for other meetings, so they, they've known about it.
They talked to the post office or whatever.
Yeah.
Who knows in the post office?
But...
Who knows in the post office for the last couple of months?
Just about every time, somebody puts in a application.
Totally think.
Yes, or was. There's some meetings coming up, the ones the people from Thor to come to, just come and look.
When they put the application in, nobody knows anything about it, until it hits down here to the, uh, board of adjustment person, and then they call for the board of adjustment to go through it. We don't know anything about it until probably a week or so before we get it in our hands for the board of adjustment. And usually, we try to notify the neighbors around there, and that's not, according to law, we don't have to, but just out of courtesy, we need to, because we know that these big pigs will not go out and talk to the neighbors. They never have.
I still haven't found out what size it is, or anything.
It's gonna be five thousand head, and it's gonna be finishing.
You'd have to file them...
Until market.
Is it two buildings or one?
Two buildings.
Two buildings.
Two double links, probably, similar to the one that's sitting out there on Highway three.
Yep.
Kind of semi.
The only thing that I see, they asked for two driveways, and I haven't seen the tag, uh, permit come through up here yet for the, to second driveway.
We haven't seen it, no.
I know that, I informed them down there that they wouldn't get two driveways, because our ordinance states they won't.
That's a minimum maintenance road.
Right.
There'd be a lot of county money spent the same way by our road.
But most of the time...
If it's shovel, there's snow, uh, haul can do some out there plowing all the time, uh, Brian Nelson's, uh, there's gonna have to be some money spent by the county, let those trucks come and go.
It's, it's just like all the rest of them that they put in, they put them in on a minimum maintenance or no snow removal road, the county does not get taxes from them, except for the ag tax for the property. We don't get anything out of them that costs the county money, and that's the way it's been on every one of them. Uh, if you want to know, we have fifty-eight sites with over a hundred and twenty hog houses in the county right now.
Say that again?
Fifty, fifty-eight sites that we know of, and over a hundred and twenty houses.
Buildings.
Buildings, on it.
One thing that could be noted, too, is this isn't a family farmer operation.
No.
This is a large corporate investor.
They could choose different locations.
Yes.
He has the option.
There should be a manure management plan out there someplace to tell you where that manure's going. I assume it...
Right in the...
Right in the pack?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's going right up to the city limits.
Yeah, right up the city limits.
Humboldt County is four hundred and thirty-two square mile, with fifty-eight sites, so...
Well, I just, I would remind what we, the last time you were in here, we said it's, when we appealed it the first time, it's an uphill battle. We're fighting the master matrix, we're fighting, uh, but we appealed it, and we're to this point, boards...
There might be a loophole this time, though.
Well, I understand, I'm just telling you, it's still an uphill battle.
Yep.
We, we are uphill the, from beginning.
Communication is key, though, if you do hear something, let somebody know, and they can, you know...
I will make sure that if it, if something's out, I was told at the same time everybody else.
What you need to do is get a hold of legislators, because it's on the state law that Humboldt County cannot change ordinances, can't change rules, can't make any ordinances pertaining to confinement, it's no greater than what the state has, and the state's got it, hands tied, and the legislators won't talk to us, so, people, talk to them, talk to legislators, talk to the people across the state, get your legislators on the ball. Um, there was a guy by the name of Johnson out of Oceola that proposed changing it and putting it back into the county's hands and taking it out of the states, and I don't know where that is in the House or the Senate right now.
Didn't get out of tunnel?
I don't think so.
I don't think it did.
I don't think it got out of the tunnel.
If it didn't get out of the tunnel, what, last week, then there's really no, it can't be brought up?
Won't be brought up, yes, sir.
Yeah?
Yep, so, you need to talk to their legislators, threaten them, whatever you gotta do to get them to talk about it, think about it.
I'm starting thinking down the road here, but, Des Moines suing like, what, Calhoun?
That's, that's dropped.
That's all dropped.
They have dropped it, but they're looking for other avenues to bring it back.
Exactly, so you guys don't have no say, ten years down the road, Des Moines says Humboldt County's to blame for letting the stuff be sold, how much is that gonna cost?
I don't know.
Down the road, to fight that.
Where's the manure?
They can actually come back and go after us in Humboldt County for some work against it.
Well, it's the same thing, they get their drinking water in Des Moines out of the river.
Yeah.
And, like I told them, a hundred, nineteen hundred, this was all a swamp, the whole county, that's why we had two hundred and ninety-some ag wells put in, now we're taking them all back out, where's that water gonna go?
Is there?
Well, we'll say you got farther than the last time we went down there.
Yep.
So at least we got an appeal, the court.
In ten years, I think we've been down there three times, that I know of.
Sexton and Cryanbrink are gonna be here Saturday morning at eight-thirty in Humboldt City Hall, so...
At City Hall for their...
Yeah, if anybody wants to come ask them questions or tell them what they think, I guess that's...
Excellent idea.
Yep. Good time to talk to them.
Tell them the number.
At what time?
Eight-thirty on Saturday morning, whatever that is, on the third.
Mm-hmm. Well, for right now, we've appealed it, so we'll have to wait, figure out what it is.
I want to thank the board of adjustment and the supervisors, who, uh, do this big time and stuff for our family. Oh, it's very important.
Yep.
But I want to thank the board of adjustment and the supervisors, doing, doing the extra steps, doing the appeal to EPC, or whatever they call it, and keeping, taking the steps, because down the road, we're probably gonna end up suing if that building goes in there, because our property value's gonna go to nil, and how many people want to come out once in a while to a business when there's a hog business there and the smell? Uh, so we're, we're setting up, my daughter is, my daughter-in-law's attorney, we're setting this up, so if this does fail, they're, they're gonna know about it, and we'll just take the next steps, if it's successful or not, I don't know. But we have to do the correct things, but I do, I do thank the supervisors and the board of adjustment for their work and their diligence on this.
Well, I would just let you know that on the other, on the, our side, I got scolded on Saturday because we're even considering doing this, because we've been down this road before, we've lost in the Supreme Court.
We're wasting county money.
We're wasting our money, we're, and I, I just said, these are the only steps, the only way that we have to, to, uh, question, um, this is to appeal it. The state is basically like Dave said, our hands are tied, we can only do so much, and in the steps that we are, we appealed it, the board has made that decision, so all we can say is, is John will represent us, and will be in district court, hopefully something comes of it, but we went through the steps, the channels, the hoops, whatever term you want to use, so, that's what we got. I'll close my shades and, I got thick skin, so, anyway, I guess we'll see what happens.
Well, my question is, I have no idea who is putting it up, what big money is behind it, and the idea is build it, and then they'll have to force us to tear it out. So the building they're built for a twenty-year span, I bet that, you know, know something about the building, after twenty years, they'll abandon it.
Iowa Select is putting it up, and it's on, Iowa Select is putting it up, it's on Stark Property is where it's going.
Who, who was the property, Iowa Select?
Stark.
What?
Stark.
Stark?
Lives over by Woolstock.
Oh, yeah, I know who you're talking about.
He's the one that's selling the, so many acres, usually five acres, four or five acres to put it up, and he gets the manure right top of it.
He's got the, he got more than one.
He's got, he's got property all over about four or five counties.
Yeah.
Well, we can beat it up as long as we want, but that's where we're going, John.
We thank everybody.
Thank you.
Coming in.
Appreciate it very much.
Go to the meeting that when the legislators are gonna be here...
Saturday morning, a good meeting to attend.
Because the, the real ultimate change is gonna come with fixing that master matrix, and that can only be done at the state level, but things like this are gonna put pressure on them to take a look at it. That's the best way, and you've heard that here time and time again.
And the more and more that do get appealed, it puts more pressure on them.
You almost have to force them to do something down in Des Moines, to revisit this and to get it changed.
Last time, the mayor bought it done, so, don't wanna put any pressure, but we'll just, we'll have some sign petitions here, if that'll help any, from citizens from Thor and the surrounding countryside.
I'd, uh, take them with you and show them to them guys, because they're the ones, show them to Cryanbrink and Sexton, take them, take them to that meeting, that's that.
Either that or give them to John, either way.
Do both.
Yep, do both, yep.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Get out and voice your opinion, talk to your neighbors, all the way across the state.
Will you hand me that extra?
Well, John, you got the directive, you gotta be, what is that, kinda more vicious, I guess?
Passes over to Peggy.
Yeah, evil eye, don't you?
Work on that.
This is here.
Let Tasmanian devil come out of you.
I got a couple of questions, uh, sometime when you have time, I have a, that's who wants to present the master matrix. Turned out very well.
You might be publishing a new...
I remember, I'm a press talker.
What is that?
Something about, uh...
About this?
Yep. I'd like the recommendations. Like the recommendations, if the county board, if the board fails to comply with the evaluation requirements, that's what, one thing's going to really make... What are they talking about, Des Moines?
But the thing is, if we don't take the advice down here, it's not going to be in favor. At least that first thing, in District Court, the judge is going to...
We're not doing, why are we getting all these... Evaluation, that would, what are we, we just...
I know, I am, nobody watches, my cousin says, I don't know what you're doing.
Sometime when you get time, you want to think about it.
Once in a while, get a tidbit of excitement.
I said a lot of things. Yeah, that, but... That just want to know what that, it sounds to me like, you know, if I do it and read some of the stuff, I think ISAC, they're starting to get with it, yeah, get, get the idea, but...
Well, that's, that's going to get a lot of more buildings coming.
Change the requirements, so they're never going to pass.
But we're not, you're not going to not have them, but what's wrong with injunctions?
Yeah.
Don't put it there.
Yeah, because they could have put it further into that farm, that's the word, right?
And then why not?
We could have had it on...
We're just not going to spread it, just put it over, over there.
Yeah.
They don't, that's the thing, he would think, oh, they would just look at their proposed location, say, let's move it over here.
But I really think they picked these locations to prove a point.
Well, that really stinks.
I think so.
Literally and figuratively, it's...
They're doing this harm on purpose. Yeah, they talked about the ma- master matrix and that, I just thought there's something, said there's nothing to do.
Really in place. I don't like too many cooks boiling the batter, so unless there's something...
Wouldn't we have a good chance on this one, in the, in failing the matrix, if they followed the procedure?
I think so.
I don't see any problem.
And if you guys want to hire out like John...
I don't see reason to do...
I don't think so.
Well, there probably isn't too many people in that field.
Mayor, technically, is...
I don't know if there's any one of the specializes in it.
Uh, if I want, they're going to be...
I agree, at one point, you can, you can petition, so...
Okay, okay, but I don't, I don't know...
They've been circling around the countryside and through town, so...
Okay. Okay. Thanks. But I, I don't know, if you really want to go down to the council, like, just with me, you talk to one of the groups against the confinement, they might have a lawyer that's doing it for you.
Well, if you get to a point where you, I don't know if you're tasked with anything you can't handle, John, at this point, I mean, this is a...
I think I can handle it.
I put my trust in you, John.
The thing is, to get that injunction thing is my big concern, because if they, if there's loopholes and there's loopholes, if they can get the stupid thing built before the hearing, it starts becoming a point.
Right.
Pretty sure my wife...
How long are you going to be gone?
That's the key thing, but I, I think, I don't see the, the L-word in that way, but I don't see anything that I'd see right now that John can handle. Can we do the claims? Can we do the claims?
We've got a few things that we can do before nine fifteen is our next scheduled appointment or timeframe here, so I entertain a motion for, if, approval of the claims, if anybody left them over.
Okay, I got claims of a hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine, twenty-four for general, and drainage of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one forty-three, fifty-three.
That's the number that I had, we have a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion, Sam.
Any, we have a motion in a second.
You make a motion?
Yes, I did.
You're second?
I'm second.
Okay.
All right, so any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign, motion carries. Now, we need to step up one there, and Peggy wants to set a time and a date for the public hearing on the two thousand eighteen-nineteen Humboldt County budget.
We're looking at March twelfth, um, we have some time open at eight-thirty-five on our agenda, if that will work with you guys.
Eight-thirty-five budget.
Eight-thirty-five.
All right, I'll make the motion for a public hearing for the twenty eighteen-nineteen for March twelfth at eight-thirty-five.
The second motion.
Motion in a second for eight-thirty-five, March twelfth, any other discussion, is, Eric, are you looking to see if you're going to be here?
Uh, I'm going to be here, March twelfth, uh, yes, that's fine, no further discussion needed.
Okay, uh, all those in favor of the hearing?
Aye.
All those same sign, the twelfth at eight-thirty-five it is. I'm going to run these into the ladies, and they can get started. Hey, you're off, start paying. She was laughing, I need that. Okay, next, approved transfer, uh, Rural Services Debt Services Secondary Road Fund.
Okay, we haven't made any transfers yet this fiscal year, um...
That's a colored book or sheet?
Yep, that's a colored sheet. So, the first one should be your general basic transfer, it just shows you the calculations we have to go through to figure out how much we can transfer. On the backside of that page is the actual transfer form I'll be giving to the treasurer's office, and it tells exactly how much money is going from general basic to rural services at this point. That's not the full allocation, but it's as much as we can give right now until taxes come in again in March.
We have to do what, a couple times a year for this?
Yep, we should do a couple times. So, we're asking to transfer a hundred thousand from general basic to secondary road, then behind that is a rural services fund transfer, and again, the calculations that put that together on the backside is the actual transfer form, we're looking to move seven hundred thousand from rural services into secondary road. And the last one, or last two of them, are some smaller transfers from, uh, one's from rural services, or from community betterment to rural services, and the other is from community betterment to general basic. The one to the rural services is to provide the funding for the libraries. We decided last fiscal year for this, for this fiscal year, um, to fund the libraries through community betterment money, and then also to fund the, uh, payment and the principal and the interest for the LEC loan out of community betterment. So, we'll make that transfer to general basic, when the time comes to pay the bill, then we have to transfer it into the debt service fund, and then we'll pay it out of there.
So, do you need a separate on all, or we can do a font from tall four?
We got six transfers, right? Two, four, six.
One, two, three, four. Guess I didn't count.
I did.
One, two, three, four.
Okay, I got two sheets the same, um, but...
There are different numbers at the top.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, for the transfers for rural service debt service to the second, secondary road funds.
And set them out there?
Yep, set them out, stated.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yeah, second.
For the second, and Dave, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign, motion carries to the transfer. We need to approve a, for filing and publication for the calendar year two thousand seventeen salary report per Iowa Code Section three, four, nine, point one, eight, C.
We're required once a year to publish the salaries of all the county officials, um, anybody that's on our payroll system. This may not be the amount that matches your, your check, but it's a calendar year, not a fiscal year, so your fiscal year salary is going to look different than your calendar year salary, so if you look at this and say, gee, I don't think I make that kind of money that, it's combining half a one year, half another year to make.
I move we approve the...
The fiscal year, and then this is calendar year.
Do you have a copy of that, or that's just...
I hope you did, because I was...
Is that just the one that lists all the salaries?
Yes.
Yes, we have a copy, that's in our drawer, probably, right here.
All right.
I move we approve the publication of salaries for the two thousand seventeen year at Code of Iowa.
We have a motion?
Second that.
And a second, any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign, motion carries. All right, um, we still have a few minutes, want to start with our committee reports, or you have anything else to fix briefly, four minutes, Peggy?
I was just going to mention to you that, um, a few weeks ago, Bruce had given me a resolution for the multi-jurisdictional, dictional hazard mitigation plan, and I've got it on the agenda for March twelfth, so I, there wasn't a timeframe given to me as to when this needed to be done, but I thought maybe we should be getting it ready and get it on the, the book.
Okay.
So, I just want you to know that.
All right.
Um, you'd ask for a copy of that, so I'll give that to you. Um, this is, uh, okay, that's it, then.
All right. Carl, you want to, we can restart now?
All right, I had only one meeting this week, and that was on Friday, I went to Fertile, Iowa, and don't tell me what county...
That's a big city.
It's up there by Mason City someplace, and we had Director Jerry Foxholtan, Director of Iowa Department of Human Services there, he basically talked to the providers of this twenty-two county area, and the big concern they have is that managed care organizations are not paying us locally. We, we are backed up for the services, and we never get the money from them, well, six one and a half dozen the other. He promised he's going to get this resolved, I suppose there's probably forty, fifty people there, and we listened to him, we listened to the gripes, and he took notes and passed out cards, and I think maybe something will change. He's only been in the job for eight months, so got to give him a little time, I think, and there's a lot of discernment about, you know, managed care went from privatized from the state of Iowa, and they was complaining about that, and we're one of the few states that is not that, we will, most of the states are gone that route, so you hear a lot of griping. He used the example of, um, people say, they get hundreds of calls, well, he said he hadn't had a hundreds of calls, and there's six hundred thousand people on Medicare, and if there's a hundred calls there, it's one percent of one percent, it's a very small amount, so it's not a big concern we have when you start getting that money flow through, and that was about the extent of it. We talked a little bit after the meeting about maybe the area of twenty-two counties is too large, maybe we need to split that into two, two, uh, two areas, we have enough people, we have enough numbers, and, you know, there's a little jealousy from one side toward a street rapid and water...
There's a lot of demographic difference, now, east of Iowa to this side.
So, that might be something that's forthcoming.
Okay.
It's a...
Was it all attended?
I think every county represented.
They were all there, too?
I think so.
Hey.
Uh, looks like I need to go back.
I have to go back a week, because you never back to hearing last week.
Uh, on the twelfth, we had the Farm Bureau meeting. Fifteenth and sixteenth, I was in Des Moines on the insurance meetings, got my eyes open down there, that was interesting.
Good cookies, though, I tell you.
It was good cookies and good food. Um, last Tuesday, I wasn't at the board meeting here, I represented the county down at the EPC board in Des Moines, and I think that's all I had last week.
And thank you for doing...
On the phone several times.
And thank you for doing that, Dave, that was very important.
I was surprised, did they, they only had five members there?
No, they had, uh, eight out of the nine.
Eight out of the nine, but they only got four votes?
Well, one abstained on every vote, both votes.
Oh, so it's four and four, then?
Yeah, it's four and four, well, one abstained, one absent, and so that left it three to four, and they took real cold votes on them.
Yeah.
But it did get their eyes open a little bit.
Good. Last time I was down there, it was like talking to the wall.
Well, that's what I thought this time, they kind of threw the monkey wrench in it, uh, they just want to set time, and then they didn't really set time, and then when it was our turn to get up to talk, Louis got up and talked, because he had the information on this business, and I looked over at Melanie, I says, you want to talk, she shook her head, so I got up, and this little lawyer for Iowa Select jumped up, she went to the podium, and she gave her spiel, and I said, wait a minute, it wasn't done yet. So, when she got done, I asked him, I says, can I speak? Well, who are you? And so I told him, and he says, well, the other guy used your time. What time? But, he said, I'll let you go ahead and speak. So, I spoke a little bit and stuff that I knew, and the one guy looked at me and he said, Humboldt County has been down here several times in the last ten years I've been on this board, and I held my fingers up, and I said, three. In ten years, we've been down there three times, so, they let me talk, and then...
Tony still has concern on it, so I would hope they...
But, uh, they took the vote, didn't get it, they have to have five members to voting for it in order for it to pass, because they're a nine-member board, there was one guy absent, and one abstained on both votes, so they didn't get the votes that they needed, so therefore it reverted back to the ruling for the DNR. I guess that's how they come out, so. It was interesting, I think we got somewhere on it, I think we opened their eyes a little bit down there, but I don't know, the people are hard to read.
This past Friday, the twenty-third, I was right here for Wetlands Mitigation Informational Meeting, and it was very good, it was very informative, I learned a lot, obviously that concerns strictly, basically, the closure of those remaining ag wells, so I won't go into any great detail, but it was very educational and informative, and, uh, I can talk later about some of the details, but, uh, that was last, past Friday here on that meeting.
Okay, uh, Tuesday evening, I was down at the Regional Landfill, uh, they had a full board, uh, they had, did have a rate increase of five dollars a ton, going from thirty-five to forty dollars a ton. We're still, in the whole state, I think there's only four or five that are less than us, after we took the bump. Um, they are discussing getting that household hazardous waste mobile unit put together, they, we've ordered a trailer, they're, they're going to get training as to how to deal it, deal with it, and they, and they figured out a price package to bring it to towns, rather than having all these people drive down there, they thought they, for so many dollars, they could bring it to a community and have it staffed, and then people bring it to them, they just take it and then take it back down to Fort Dodge.
Well, that would be the mobile part of it.
The mobile part of it, yeah.
That sounds like a good idea.
I think so.
They're going to get it accomplished?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that would be good.
And for some of, and they're looking at a fee of about seven to eight hundred dollars, so it is kind of spendy, mainly for the staff, because they're going to bring employees, and then, um, and they said some of these smaller communities, they could have it in one community and share the cost with the other couple of smaller communities around them, to ma- make it more affordable. Uh, I think the only thing that they require is a bathroom facility to be open and certain parking area and things like that, but, uh, that's coming, hopefully here in the next six months, that'll be up and running.
I'm glad that's going to happen, I've probably gotten more calls on that issue from people in town, wanting to know what they do with their oil-based paint, mud use, or insecticides, than any other calls I've had.
Yeah.
I didn't have an answer for them, go to poke on it, I told them.
They get some of the darnedest stuff down there now, liquid mercury.
Wow.
Like eight pounds of it.
Oh.
You know, and some of the, some of the stuff comes in, it's quite, quite hazardous.
Yeah, it's real hazardous.
You know, and so they're, they're well-trained to handle, because a lot of weird stuff comes in. Yeah, I don't know.
Then be free to the, to the guy to drop it off to, right?
Yes, yeah, had no charge.
Perfect.
So, um, that was, that's all I had, it was just that, one meeting.
Okay, uh, Tuesday night, I was up here for the nine-one-one, just the FYI, um, nine-one-one is the new term, they, we've dropped the E, nine-one-one, that was brought up at the meeting, that they're, that's just nine-one-one board now, so, um, we discussed, uh, some of the issues, had a couple of those, I guess one of them had a, uh, they were worried about some of the signs, uh, like out in the country, they've been there for, what were the, getting on twenty years, so they're wondering if some of them are getting sun painted, so they're contemplating on whether they will, uh, do something with them, um, I guess it'll come up in meetings to come, whether that's one of the things they do. Um, the twenty-first, uh, Wednesday, we had our ministerial meeting over... Um, the 21st, uh, Wednesday, we had our ministerial meeting over at the Methodist Church during the Lent. They always have it over there, 'cause that's the community, uh, for the community service, and then they just run in there and meet in the other rooms. Um, we visited about the, the food pantry. Um, we're still waiting to hear, um, whether that, uh, food pantry would be the old post office. There's a lot of stuff going around town about whether it's too, too full of mold, too bad to use, too this, too that. Um, the mold guy that looked at it doesn't believe that that's the case, so, um, he seriously thinks that the, the building could be renovated. The issue where the water coming in, um, on the roof could be fixed and make that into, um, hopefully, a food pantry, um, and get the building back in service, which would be a nice addition for that corner, 'cause it sat there for a long time. Then on, uh, Thursday night, I was supposed to go to CFR meeting, and that was the beginning of the weather, uh, so she canceled that. Um, and Friday morning, uh, I was supposed to have my juvenile detention meeting, and I canceled that, 'cause I didn't feel like driving across 20 on the ice, so I didn't go to that. So being as I was in the area, um, I stopped through up here and met, or I wasn't at the entire meeting, but got my opportunity to ask a couple of questions. Um, was it Kevin and, and, uh, Mike?
Kevin, yeah, for mitigation, and then Mike Borland was here, the idles.
Kevin had a couple of his assistants that were along, so I think that there's some, some, uh, things that were discussed, probably a lot more in detail before I got here, but I think there's some options, so we'll, uh, keep our fingers crossed, and, and hopefully that'll, uh, all work out and head towards a...
A little more optimistic on the wetlands, and, and there's a lot, it's far from a done deal, but that was great information. But like, I don't wanna bore you with the details unless you ask for them, so we can keep moving along here.
So I don't see, that's all I had, but I don't see, uh...
I have her information if you want to go ahead and review it.
Well, if you wanna come up and...
This is the Presle and Livermore that is abandoned, and the city wants to take ownership by acquiring the tax sale certificate from the county. The 2016 certificate, the tax hasn't been paid, but 2014, they would pay the $10 claim received, and then the tax could all be abated. They have a, the mowing charges on there, it looks like, and the neighbors, what I understand, are interested in it, and the city thought they would do the process of getting ownership and then passing it on to the neighbors, however they would feel worth. So this is to sign the tax sale certificate to the city of Livermore and abate the taxes.
Anybody got any questions for, on them? And I'll ask the same thing we always do, the drainage and stuff is still on there?
There's, there's no drainage on this one.
There's no drainage on this one?
Just the city special.
Okay.
So they, is this going to the city or...
Well, currently, the city, they want to, 'cause they have taken the house down, and they'll probably...
But someone is gonna, didn't you mention someone's actually going to buy the prop, so are they gonna get it from the city then?
Yeah.
But this gives it to the city to, for the private...
Yeah, the removal of the home.
And then that someone else, then they'll buy the property?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's kinda typically what we do here.
Yeah, it isn't, it's not always the city that acquires it, but this still has the building on it, it's not a bare lodge, and they're more equipped to remove that type of property.
Yeah, they'll...
But they aren't gonna end up with some property.
Right, it'll go back on the tax rolls when it's cleaned up, yep.
So that's the key, so just the formalities, looks good?
Yeah. Why am I saying mowing it? Who pays it?
It's, uh, city certified bills right now, and the city will secure them.
We're just debating the taxes, right?
We're debating, you can debate everything, they, they're fine with that, 'cause they're not gonna get their money either.
That's right.
True.
Okay.
I mean, they, each summer, it's $500 to move the property.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the abatement and sign a tax sale certificate, 2016, 00074.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, did you get all those numbers?
Yeah, I get all them zeros.
Yeah, we're about 00074. You have a motion and second, any other discussion?
Was that exclusive, anything I did?
Yes, I did.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, same sign?
Good work. Thank you.
Yeah, please, just go through that.
Uh, also, I was just looking through my files, piles here. Remember, we have a meeting tonight at the conference board in here?
Six.
Six bells.
Why did we move down here? There's more room up there.
Why did we move down here? Because it takes like five minutes to walk upstairs, and where we don't.
Oh, okay.
It takes three minutes to get through that.
Meeting, you always go on the backside of the table, you always go on the front side of the table, where you gotta bend underneath the coat rack.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now that we got that in.
I'm short. We have a household...
You got a point there, Bruce. Takes longer to walk up.
Takes longer to walk up, three flights of steps than it does to hold the meeting, so we just said, "Well, we'll just stop in here."
Meeting should last about two minutes, right?
Yep. So just a reminder to make sure you're here at six bells, because 6:02 will be probably headed down if you're late. Um, looks like we headed towards drainage, unless anybody has anything else.
I just wanted to mention real quick, since Bruce will be gone next Monday, Carl and I will also be gone, so you three are gonna need to be here to have a quorum to conduct any business next week.
Oh, okay.
That's like we'll be here.
See that, we're taking a week off.
I can call in.
Okay, have you, well, that's fine.
Make a light agenda.
Yeah, that's the only thing, you probably don't really know too much on that today.
No.
Agenda vice.
I'm on the agenda, did you guys have anything in line for coming day capital? Are all your plans going?
No.
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 Sure we didn't see anybody.
No. It's up to you, but it's just, um, we're gonna go down that day, 'cause I think most of, not all of us are going to the ISAC conference, but just to get down there for that, but that was just a leave early, stand around, not much of anything.
We sat downstairs waiting to meet, and they were all in the...
They visited, it's a nice ladies' room.
Oh, they were wonderful. We got an education, but...
Some years it's good, some years it's bad, depending whether a committee...
You said it was this Saturday, that the Mike said, this coming Saturday?
I planned to go down.
That's gonna get, as far as the capital, you're gonna gain more traction going to that meeting.
Yeah, you would.
So, like Peggy said, Carl and her are gonna be gone, and I'm going to leave on Friday, so I'll be back the following Friday.
All righty.
Looks like we're gonna have to keep the ship rated.
Yeah.
From the sails, all that fun stuff.
Well, looks like we're waiting to go towards drainage.
Okay, and then in that case, you've got your chairman and your vice chair gone, so one of you guys will have to head up to me.
What day practice?
We'll, we'll let you, yep, we'll let you decide who.
Okay. We'll figure it out.
Just so you're aware.
Yeah, I don't... And thank you for moving the clock.
Now Dave knows what time it is.
Sounds good for you. Looking at this, the hook's still up, sir. Oh, well. Uh, make, uh, anybody wanna make a motion to move towards drainage?
I'll make a motion, we're going to drainage.
Second that.
Motion and second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign, we're in drainage.
We have a...
Couple minute recess in between, all right?
Turn the camera off.
I got it.
Welcome. Okay.
I picked up.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.